Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners Meeting for Tuesday, January 11th, 2020. I hope everybody had a Merry Christmas and is starting off a fabulous new year. A little crisp and cool this morning, but a little cool weather does everybody a little bit of good. Is Mr. Dennis Childers here today? We'll start our meeting with Mr. Dennis Childers with God's Kitchen. We'll give our invocation, and Commissioner Turner will lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
Father, we come before you humbly today. Father, this room is going to be filled with decision making today, Father. We pray that you influence that. We pray that we know what we're here for and we do what we're supposed to do to serve you as well as serve this county. I pray for each one of these county commissioners, fathers. They come to appointment making decisions and working with people. Father, I pray that you'll just be with them and help them to make the decisions they need to make. You've given them a huge responsibility. Decisions they make in this room will affect a lot of people. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in a country where this prayer could even be said before a government meeting. And Father, we thank you for the leadership throughout our county, our city, our state, and our federal government, Father. They have a heavy burden. Father, I pray for each person that comes to speak today, Father, that you give them clarity of mind, clarity of thought, and this decision that we've made without any mind. Father, bless us this day and this time. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Childers, and thank you, Commissioner Turner. Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioners, we'll move down to our first item of business, approval of the minutes presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes stated in our packet.
Second.
Got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are passed. Okay, we're going to recess the regular Board of County Commissioner meeting, and we'll move into our Port Authority meeting. Our first item is the approval of minutes of December 14th, 2021, Port Authority Regular Meeting and December 14th, 2021, Authority Regular Workshop.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes as stated.
Second.
Got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We'll move down to public comment on Port Authority items. This is a time if any citizens wish to make a comment on Port Authority items. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion, and we'll move down to general discussion on Port Authority items. Commissioners, any items you would like to discuss this morning? Okay, seeing none, staff, any updates at all?
No, sir. We're right on track with everything that's going out there right now. We've had a couple of meetings on the Port Authority project, the Port Project moving forward. I've been in conversations with folks in Tallahassee and plan to continue those conversations when we get there later this month, but everything seems to be on track.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, or Minister Suggs. Commissioner Harvey, do you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we were notified by Chris Doolin with Small County Coalition that tomorrow, I believe it was nine o'clock in the morning, Putnam County will be discussed at the state legislators of the joining of the port. Is that my?
Port Council.
Yeah, the Port Council. That's some of the conversations, Mr. Chairman, that we've had. Got an email yesterday based on the conversation we had with some folks in Tallahassee via Zoom call last Friday. So the language in the House bill and the Senate bill that's pushing for the Port Project to have opportunity for membership in the Florida Ports Council is going to be discussed in subcommittee, I believe, this coming week, as early as tomorrow. I don't know what the decision or how soon an outcome of that would be, but we certainly have our folks in Tallahassee that's working on our behalf, attending the meeting as well. And we hope to try to Zoom the meeting here at the office so we can at least pay attention, see if there's anything else going on that we need to address prior to legislation.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any further discussion on Port Authority items? Okay, seeing none, all adjourned to Port Authority portion, and we'll reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting. And as Commissioner Harvey always says, this is a fun part of our job, is to be able to see recognition of our employees, whether they're with Public Works or EMS or any part of the county. And so at this time, we're going to recognize some employees. Ms. Sarah will do that. Some of them are not here. She's going to announce those first. But what I'd like to do is, somebody made a suggestion yesterday, and if it works out, I'll tell you who made the suggestion to me. But what I'd like is for the Commissioners to, well, maybe I'll take credit if it works out. If not, I'll say they did it. But anyway, the Commissioners, I want you to go down front here and all with our staff, and as they come through, shake their hands and just congratulate them, and they can assemble over here, and then we'll take one picture when we're done. So Commissioners, if we'll come up right front. And Ms. Sarah.
Good morning. Can you guys hear me? Okay. First, we're going to start off with the Employee of the Month for December, and she works in Public Works. And Mike Choxall, the Executive Director of Public Works, is going to present her award to her.
Oh, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you guys very much for what you do. I have a special person coming forward here now. Some of you guys might know her, some of you folks might not know her, but she is the backbone to our Utilities Department. Carol Belayo does all of our billing and all of our behind-the-work scenes there in our Utility Department, and it is, you can probably count on the number of folks, on one hand, that she does not know personally. We have over almost 1,000 water customers, and I bet she knows all 1,000 of them, and their billing history and structure, as well as our newer sewer customers that are coming onboard with the Septic Sewer. She just does an amazing job for us. She runs all of our, I mentioned billing, but she also does our, when we do our, run our routes for meter readings, she downloads all that stuff to the computer, prints out all the bills, mails all the bills. So she is truly the force behind our Utilities Department. I can't thank her enough for what she does, day in, day out, in that department. If anybody needs something done at Utilities, they call Carol. So she's awesome. With that, I want to thank you for what you do, and so, well-deserved Employee of the Month for Public Works.
Come on. You gotta run the line.
The Employee Recognition Committee also selected the Employee of the Quarter, and due to her consistent, excellent work ethic and work product, the team selected Laura Barardi as Employee of the Quarter for the first quarter of fiscal year '22. So we have 10 employees to recognize the length of service for the Board of County Commissioners. Some of them could not be here today, but I'm just going to go through the list, and the ones that are here can come up. So the first person we want to recognize is Jesse Howard for five years of service, and he's in our IT Department. Our next person we want to recognize is Kimberly Clark. She's in the Drug Court Administration Office, and she has five years of service. Don't think she's here today. Next up from our Fire Rescue EMS Services is Mark Salas, five years of service. Next, we're recognizing Garrett Vidion from Fire EMS with five years of service. He's not here today. Johnny Phillips with Fire EMS has 10 years of service. He's not here today. And Bill Roulan with Public Works has 10 years of service. And the remaining people who could not be here today, Ayada Moreno Smith with the Library has 15 years of service. Crystal Macasio in the Agriculture Department has 15 years of service. Anne Jasecki with Public Works has 20 years of service. And Steve Beverley with Public Works has 25 years of service. I'd like to thank all of the employees for their dedication and commitment to our county.
I'll stand up here, even though I'm kind of addressing everybody. If Missy Day will come up. Missy has been with the Putnam County Clerk of Courts and Comptroller's Office now for 20 years, and she just recently accepted a position to be our Court Services Coordinator. And so she will primarily be responsible for jury, along with reporting and some other things on the court side. So congratulations to Missy, and thank you for your dedication to the Clerk's office for 20 years, and looking forward to hopefully many more years.
Okay, thank you. We really do have a lot of great employees working for Putnam County, whether they're for, on the county side or the constitutional office. We really are blessed, and that's just a tribute to them and their dedication. Okay, we'll move down to proclamations. And C, I'll ask Ms. Mariana Conter and her associates that are with her, CDS Family and Behavioral Health Services, National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, January 2022, and National Human Trafficking Awareness Day, January 11th, 2022. So I've asked Commissioner Rawls to read the proclamation, and I'll come to the podium.
This is Proclamation 2022-01, National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Whereas nearly a half, excuse me, nearly a century and a half ago, President Abraham Lincoln issued the proclamation, the Emancipation Proclamation, a document that reaffirmed the noble goals of equality and freedom for all that lie at the heart of what it means to live in America. In the years since, we have tirelessly pursued the realization, protection of these essential And whereas despite our success, as thousands of living in the United States is still more abroad suffer in silence under the intolerable yoke of modern slavery. During the National Slavery and Human Trafficking Awareness Month, we stand with all those who are held in compelled service. We recognize that people, organizations, and government entities that are working to combat human trafficking, and we will recommit to bringing an end to this inexcusable human rights abuse. And whereas human trafficking is a $32 billion per year global criminal enterprise and is a crime as well as civil and human rights violation, and as an estimated 25 million people are currently victims of human trafficking for both sex and labor, and whereas human trafficking endangers the lives of millions of people around the world, and it's a crime that knows no borders, human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery. Be it for commercialized sexual or labor exploitation, this otherwise multi-layered crime does not have a statistic profile. It affects children, adults, U.S. citizens, residents, and foreign nationals alike. Whereas this month, we do not simply reflect on this appalling reality, we also pledge to do all in our power to end this horrific practice of human trafficking that plagues victims around the world and our neighborhoods, and now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida, that January 22nd is designated National Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Putnam County, and to urge all citizens to educate themselves about all forms of modern slavery and the signs and consequence of human trafficking. Done, ordered, and adopted this 11th day of January 2022. Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Got a proper motion by Commissioner Rawls, a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, and in that case, say by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Proclamation passes. Before I give this to Ms. Mariana, I just known her a long time, she and her husband, Bill, and just know that, how much they have given back to the community, and this is just another way. In today's world, in 2022, you just figure that this would not be in our world, but it is, and it's, we just appreciate everything that you do, and hopefully you'll say a few words.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you all for wearing blue. I know I said that, you know, blue is human trafficking awareness colors, so I appreciate that you all did wear blue today. I do also have some flyers here, if you're interested. It's just ways to educate yourself. It's just some trainings that have been put in place so that you can, if anyone wants the information. And if anyone is really looking for information on what human trafficking looks like, or how to recognize it, you know, don't ever hesitate to give me a call, or they call you and want my number, please give it to them. You know, I'll do everything I can to help out in that way. So I'll leave these with you guys, and I do want to thank you. One of the first questions that I get when I'm presenting is that, does Putnam County really have that much? And unfortunately, Putnam County is right there with everyone else. And the United States actually has more trafficking than worldwide. So it really is a problem that we need to learn to recognize the signs. Sometimes the signs are all mistaken for other things. So it's, we all need to be able to recognize the signs, and if you see something, say something. So I do have a sign here that I will leave with you, leave here at the Commission Officer in case, office in case anyone wants it, but is, can you see him? Because people will see a kid like this and not have any idea that he's being trafficked. Okay? And again, I think we all want to thank you. These are, these are my compadres right here. This is, I'm sorry, Cindy Starling, she's the COO of CDS Family and Behavioral Services. Latoya Robinson, who is the Residential Counselor, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name again.
Hi, Chanel Deion. I'm with the Open Doors Outreach Network team, and we'll be coming back to Putnam, Black River, Lucio County, to provide services for survivors of HT.
And thank you all again.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question real quick. Can you talk about Jacksonville? I've read statistics, and it looks like northeast Florida, the epicenter, is Jacksonville. Do you all have any interactions with the folks up there that are taking this on in Sheriff's Department, Police Department?
Chanel probably does.
So we, so I actually, our office is in the Jacksonville area, and so we are one of the higher numbers, Duval County, I think we're number four right now. So we.
Is that in the state?
It's for the state of Florida, yes. Duval County is number four. So we are definitely have a strong partnership with JSO and other surrounding Sheriff's Offices. They work with us tirelessly, ongoing with cases that we have with victims and survivors of HT. So we definitely see it. It's happening. I myself am a survivor, and so I know what it's like to be on the other side. And so the reason why I came to do this work is to encourage those who have walked in my shoes and to give them hope and know that there is life after what we've been through. So I've been in the fight against trafficking for a very long time, and I'm just looking to continue doing that work. So I appreciate you guys' support.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd just like to mention real quick, we've already changed the lights down at the courthouse, so if everybody will see this month, that the courthouse will be lit up blue for awareness of.
I appreciate that.
Trafficking Month.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, I'll ask Mr. Stephen Crowley to come up with his group and One Book One Putnam, twenty twenty-two Putnam County Read proclamation, and I've asked Commissioner Adams Act to read that proclamation.
Putnam County Proclamation Number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two, One Book One Putnam, twenty twenty-two Putnam County Read, The Incredible Winston, The Incredible Winston Brown by Sean Dietrich. Whereas reading is an important activity for all of the residents of Putnam County, and whereas less than half of the adult population of Putnam County now reads literature, the Board of Commissioners wishes to encourage all of the county's residents, both young and old, to read. And whereas reading is one way to create bonds within a family and among friends and neighbors, we want to get everyone in the community from high school youth and office workers to public officials and senior citizens to read and discuss a great book together. And whereas One Book One Putnam is encouraging all residents to read Sean Dietrich's book, The Incredible Winston Brown, a story about a man's love for baseball and his small hometown. Whereas this program aims to revive literary reading in Putnam County, therefore, in support of this goal, there will be book discussions, community activities, knowledgeable speakers. And whereas the Board of Commissioners knows the residents of Putnam County will benefit and learn from reading this book, and whereas One Book One Putnam is celebrating fifteen years of encouraging reading throughout Putnam County, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Putnam County Board of Commissioners does hereby support learning through reading as promoted by One Book One Putnam, proclaim January, February twenty twenty, as the One Book One Putnam County Read Month. Done, ordered, and adopted eleventh day, January twenty-two. I so move.
Got a proper motion by Commissioner Adams Act, proper second by Commissioner Turner. All in favor, and if it's saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Proclamation passes. Congratulations.
Commissioner Pickens. I know, Mr. Pickens, you know me well. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here once again, even though I'm retired from the library system. As I often say, reading rocks, and it really does throughout Putnam County. And we are truly excited this year to be celebrating in person and live Sean Dietrich's The Incredible Winston Brown. It's a story of community. It's a story of love. It's a story of mystery. It's a story of baseball. It's not about baseball, but it's how baseball intertwines itself in the life of a community, and how those are the kinds of things that draw a community together. And in this day and age, I think anything we can do to draw community together is a neat and wonderful thing, and reading is certainly one of those things, and particularly reading and talking about what you have read. So we will have book discussions coming up, and I'd certainly love to see all of you tonight at our kickoff at the Palatka Golf Club at six o'clock, where we'll have oddly enough displays and talks about baseball. And when we first started exploring this, I didn't realize what a rich heritage of baseball there is in Palatka, in Putnam County. We all know the stories of Babe Ruth, but there's so much more about baseball that has gone on in this community. So there's a chance tonight to find out and connect with some of your fellow readers. And so it is with pleasure that we share with you a copy of the book. I hope you enjoy it. I hope you enjoy reading it. And as always, I thank you for the support that you give to One Book One Putnam through the library system. We are a completely volunteer organization. We get no money, although we'd love if you'd like to give us ten or fifteen thousand dollars. That would be nice, but I live in a pie in the sky world sometimes. So we just appreciate your support, and I can't thank Stella Brown and Amisha Johns for the support that they give us in making our program successful. And behind me are the people that really make this successful, and that is Stella Brown, Karen Lee, Lulagale Griffiths, Joyce Oliver, Roberta, Roberta. I have worked more with Roberta over the years, and her name just went right out of my brain. This is what retirement really does to you. And Bob Lee, who chairs the committee. So on behalf of all of us, thank you so very much. We really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
The little bird in my ear tells me that the kickoff is at five thirty, not six o'clock. We're having hot dogs, so come out and eat.
Thank you very much. And interesting note on baseball in Putnam, I was at a grand open, the first game in floor home a couple of years ago. They had rebuilt their field. They were talking about the history and the heritage there and how it's one of the oldest baseball fields in Florida.
Really?
Yeah, how people used to come down the train tracks, they would stop, and because it was proximal to the tracks, they were able to play baseball there. But yeah, Flora Home has got one of the oldest fields in Florida.
How very cool. That is neat. See, that's what people don't understand about Putnam County and Palatka, is the heritage and the history that exists there that just, it tingles my little heart just to think about those kinds of things. So that is way cool. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Bob, y'all come up here and let's get a picture.
He wants to stand back here.
Want to stand back here, Mr. Chairman? Ms. Joyce, you doing all right?
Okay, that's all the presentation and proclamations. We're going to deviate from the agenda just a little bit, commissioners. And you see the Honorable Charles Overturf, Supervisor Elections, back there, sitting very comfortably. He's going to make a, just talk to us about the, we're in an election year, so he's going to talk to us about the canvassing board and and filling some positions that are needed. Charles, thank you.
Good morning, chairman and commissioners and staff members. As you said, this is election year. State of Florida will have two major elections, primary in August, to decide a US senator and a governor's race that will be decided in November. Statute says that we, you all, as the county commission, have the responsibility of appointing two different people. One is the actual member of the canvassing board to serve, and then an alternate, and those are both in state statutes. I will tell you, I have secured the representation of Mr. George Young, and he will represent you all as the attorney that will be a part of the canvassing board. So he's already on board, so we're certainly happy to have him back. So I wanted to make this request to you all to please consider, usually it is the chairman. If the chairman doesn't have opposition, in Bill's case, of course, his wife is on the ballot, so we don't know whether or not she will have any opposition. If she doesn't, then Bill, of course, could serve. If she doesn't, of course, and it will fall back to some of you all. Two of you I'm looking at are already on the ballot or working to get on the ballot, and so you all would not be eligible. So it leaves us up to the other members of the county commission. As you all know, most of you, the statute says that if you are involved in campaigns, i.e. you're endorsing somebody, you're, you know, working with somebody, that kind of thing, then you're not eligible, because we want to try to make sure that it's as impartial as possible. And over the last few years, we've had that where we've had to go different routes. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention to see if we can have some discussion. The meeting, the statewide meeting is already set for March, so we're not that long off. It's not required that the member go, but most of the time they have. I do have, both county judges are going, and George is going besides some of my staff. So that's why I wanted to approach you all today about it, because we're not but just a few weeks away from that meeting, and then we'll start meeting, probably the first meeting will be in June. It's not as bad as two years ago in the presidential. There won't be twenty-five meetings, but there probably will be about fifteen. So it is something that I hope whoever it is, you know, takes it very seriously, as you all have done before. So with that, I'll turn it back to you and see if we can have some discussion about who might want to.
All right. Commissioner Adams Act?
I consider myself ineligible for this due to my oath to a particular party, as well as the role that I fill outside of this office in capacity as state committee man for the Republican Party for this county. I don't think I would be the proper person for this role. Thank you.
Well, it sounds to me like the only thing I can do is pray for Holly not to get opposition.
Or. Yeah, or. Okay, so Charles, it is, there's a point where a commissioner cannot serve, then I would make an appointment. Is that correct?
The statute is a little bit fuzzy about that. In some places, the chairman has the right to do it, and then other places, you might make a suggestion, and then, of course, the board has the right to agree or disagree, or, you know, have discussion about it. So it depends on, you know, which alternative it is. If you are not able to do it, then I think it really goes back to all of you, you know, having to say so about who who represents you all. And remember, that is the purpose is, it is the Putnam County Canvassing Board, and it is whoever it is represents you all. So we want to do the best job we can.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
I remember a couple of years ago, we had a discussion about supporting candidates, and it seemed like the, at that time, that the comment may or may not have been made. I could have dreamed it, that, that if you've written a check to a political candidate before the time you take, I'll take the this on, that it probably wasn't as critical as if you supported him after you were on the canvassing board. Would you give me your opinion on that comment? Reason I'm saying is I've already given money to political candidates in this cycle.
The state sees it a little bit differently. They say that if you give a one-time donation, that they do not consider that a violation. If you continually, you know, give somebody on your, you know, on this commission money several times, then, of course, that would, I believe, violate it. And of course, if you have a fundraiser, or you do, you know, you're the chairman of the person's reelection and that kind of thing, those kind of things would definitely, you know, exclude you from that according to.
I was actually a committee member on a fundraiser not too long ago. For this election cycle, I was one of the, one of the hosts for that fundraiser. Would that exempt me, think?
I would, I would think we'd be treading, you know, in probably serious situation just because you have done that.
I just want full disclosure here.
Exactly. So I appreciate that. Yeah, just a one-time donation is, does not violate it. But if you are hosting something like that, or putting it on, or, you know, continually giving, or, you know, going door to door, you know, all of those kind of things, we want it to be where we are as impartial and as fair to every candidate, every party as possible.
Well, I understand. But like I said, I was one of the host committee for Keith Perry, a fundraiser for him.
I would, I would think, Terry, that would probably, you know, exclude you just because of that. You know, now if the other board members say we don't think so, then they might draft you.
That's, that's up to them, but I just want full disclosure.
Right, I appreciate. Yeah, he does. And just so you all will be aware, the redistricting looks like he is not going to be our state senator anymore.
Maybe it won't matter.
Well, if he's not ours, it doesn't matter if he's in your district, as long as you, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. That's just supposition on my part, looking at the proposed maps, but it does look like we're going to move.
As previously said, I just want full disclosure here in case it does come up.
So Charles, it's, I guess, supporting a candidate at any level, whether it's county or state or national, doesn't matter.
If the statute says if they're, the person you're supporting is on the ballot, then, of course, it, you know, should be the problem.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Well, I think the process of elimination is happening pretty quick up here. And so there's only two qualified people, and one is in question and the other. But I tend to take a different view that, you know, what has been done in the past, up till the board decides who's going to be on the canvassing board, I don't, I think Mr. Turner probably could serve if he wanted to serve, you know, and not do any more hosting, or not doing any more things of that nature to, to bring any scrutiny whatsoever upon the election. But we're down to two people.
Right.
So it's, it's, it's a process of elimination here, and.
Well, especially.
I know the decision doesn't have to be made today.
Right, but.
We got some time, but we got to do it.
Especially if we lose Senator Perry, you know, he's not our senator on our ballot, then it would probably be a totally different ballgame.
Sure, right.
Charles, what's a date that you'd like for this to?
Today.
The real date, not a, not a date to?
I just have to get whoever registered with the, if they are going to the statewide conference. Right now, it is still in person, but if the COVID and stuff, you know, it could possibly change to online or something. And I think they are going to film it this year for people that can't come down there, you know, and attend in person. But as soon as we can, just so I can get, the registration deadline's the end of this month. So that's why I wanted to come today, was just to at least get you thinking about it, and maybe if you had some ideas or whatever, you know, we don't have to do it by the end of the month, but it just helps to get the paperwork in and that kind of thing.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Rawls?
I agree with Commissioner Harvey, and when, when will the redistricting be final? Because if Perry doesn't even hit our ballot, it's a moot point, correct?
Right. And.
When will that be known?
Their meeting, you know, they have this governor's speech today at eleven, and, which is the kickoff of the legislative, although they met yesterday and discussed it, and they've got other meetings this afternoon about redistricting. I really believe that, because it's so important, and a lot of the incumbents are running for reelection and want to know where their district is. I think they're going to try to do that really quick in the legislative session, but technically, it'll probably be, you know, the first week of March when they adjourn. And then you always have the opportunity or the, the challenge that if somebody takes it to court, then it's April, May, but it's got to be before June, because everybody has to run in the new districts, and all the senators and all the representatives are up this year. So it's, you know, they, they know they've got to get this done pretty quick. So hopefully, we'll know in the next couple of weeks. I think the subcommittee yesterday went from four down to two proposed maps. Now they're going to turn it over to their whole committee, and then they will make a decision, and then they'll head, you know, hand it to the state senate and the state house, and let them decide if that's final or not. So I think it'll be, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks. A real good idea. Like I said, I've looked at it. It looks like congressional wise, camac is going to stay ours when we thought maybe we were going to move to Daytona, but it does look like, in the proposals I've seen, that Keith Perry will move westward, and will go to Travis Hudson's spot in St. John's County.
So would it not make sense for us just to go ahead and get a plan A, B, and C, and just chip at it? If one thing drops out?
I don't know. It would be better to wait until the first week in February and see where they're the first meeting in February and see where they are. We should have some clarity by then if they're going to take it up right off the bat, or if they're going to drag it out, or if the, you know, one party is going to be upset over what happens or what have you. We should have a better feeling of that in by the second Tuesday in February. So maybe by then, we could try to come up with something.
I will, I will mention this, that it seems like the proposals by the, the senate that they put out have really received good reports from both parties. They're not, one party is not too happy with the House proposals, but, so if the senate, you know, gets their way, so to speak, then we hopefully are going to have this over and maybe no court challenges, which will really help us a lot, so.
Like I said, it'll probably know a lot more about a month.
Yeah.
Will that give us enough time, Charles, if we wait to the second? Would you have to announce this at a meeting, I guess? Do you know? Administrator Suggs?
I would say that would be, to make a formal notice of who we are going to appoint to the canvassing board, will certainly be a discussion with the board, just so we'd have a formalization of the record.
And remember, it's two positions. It'll be somebody actually serving, but we do, by statute, have to have an alternate in case that person gets sick.
Right, alternate is usually a citizen, correct, is what I've.
Again, normally, it would be if we didn't have so many elections going on, as far as you all sitting in front of me here, it would be one of you all as the alternate also. But a lot of times, counties can't do that, especially some of the smaller ones. So they have to go the citizen route, which is fine.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. We, if it's okay with the board, we'll we'll work on this and discuss it, and then we'll come back as soon as we can to you, Charles.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move down to public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect the board will engage in debate or deliberation on matters in which the board had received no prior information. Please leave your comments to three minutes. Do we have any public comment on agenda items?
Some code cases.
These are on the code cases? Okay. Okay, we have some that are going to be on code cases, which we will move to after our consent agenda. So seeing no public comment on agenda items, we'll close that portion, and we'll move to the consent agenda items. Commissioners, any items you wish to pull? And we'll start to my right with Commissioner Adamsak?
I have none.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Rawls?
I have none.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have none, sir.
And I also have none. Could I get a motion to approve A through H?
Chairman, I move that we pass the consent agenda items A through I.
Second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion and a proper second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, and can they sing aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign.
Mr. Chairman, may I take a moment?
Yes.
On, I didn't want to pull it for discussion, but on item F, at our next public transportation workshop meeting, can we get a full presentation of what that project looks like? Because it has grown, shrunk, grown, and changed a lot. And I think it would behoove us to to get a full spectrum of what we're looking at at this point.
Excellent idea.
Thank you.
With lots of pictures.
Mike, did you hear that? Okay.
Lots of pictures, too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We're going to take a three-minute and eight-second break for a.[724.51]
He's had a loss of his mother last week, so we're all thinking about Tom right now. Our first case is two thousand nine six six two, last name Rutledge. He appeared before the board on eight twenty-four, was given ninety days to pay. He's looking for an extension of another ninety days.
We've done that multiple times.
We have.
Mr. Chairman, I move we give him another ninety days.
Second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion, well, proper motion and a proper second. Is the applicant here? No, okay, we've got a proper second, a proper motion, any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Our second case is two thousand three sixty-four. The total amount accrued is one hundred and thirty-eight thousand eighteen and fifty cents. The property is now in compliance. The owner has requested a fine reduction, as you'll see on the worksheet. If approved, staff recommends that the hard costs of thirty-two ninety-nine be paid within ninety days for case number two thousand three zero zero six four.
Okay, excuse me, yes, sir.
She signed up to speak about that?
Excuse me, about which case?
It's really hard for me to hear. And the, 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 Norma Crawford?
That's the one we're on.
That's the one we're starting on, so she'll get an opportunity to speak.
Sir, we have two cases reference that property, by the way.
Yeah, I see there's two. Are we gonna do these separately?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we, whatever way the board would like to do it, but that's normally how we do it.
Okay, yeah, I saw there are two, two separate cases, so two different violations.
Mr. Chairman, could we go ahead and hear both cases?
We can do that.
And we could individually?
Yeah, the first case was for unsafe power pole, Cara premises, and living in an RV. Our second case with the same property owner is two thousand fourteen zero eight two two. The actual fine amount was twenty-two thousand ninety-five dollars and fifty cents. The property owner has brought the property into compliance, has now requested a lien reduction. The hard costs are calculated on the form, two thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Okay.
This case was for unsafe mobile home that is now corrected and taken care of.
Okay, commissioners, any question? We'll start with Commissioner Rawls.
Ms. Moore acquired the property in the third quarter of last year and has brought into compliance. While I do not agree with her assertion that it's not her responsibility, at the same time, we've, in the past, waived the administrative fees and further reduced the fines, so is there any way? I, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around the fact that we have two open code cases on the same parcel. Is there any way that we can reduce one down to even a dollar and then enforce the other one to make this a lot less painful? Because she has done what we need her to do, which is buy the property, get it in compliance, and be a good steward. So I, would it be appropriate for us to, if we reduce the administrative fees on the first one by the twenty-six hundred, twenty-one hundred and sixty, twenty-one hundred and sixty dollars, that leaves a balance of eleven thirty-four. If we do the other one, it leaves a balance of sixteen fifty-six. You know, I, I would be willing to move that we eliminate the, the second one or reduce it to a dollar, and then reduce the other one to eleven thirty-four for a total of eleven hundred and thirty-five dollars and give her ninety days to pay.
Okay.
Is that clear as mud? No?
No. Commissioner Turner?
We have, just to answer that question, we have set that precedence before on almost an identical situation where there were two cases on the same property, and we, we even went to the point to ask Mr. Moore at that time why that was the case, and, and were able to find out that each particular case, especially when one's closed down or there's another item afterwards, that it has to be a separate case by statute, that they can't just add it or keep going on the same one, which is why there's two of them. Personally, I don't have an issue at all doing what you suggested, Commissioner Rawls, of deleting one of the cases. I guess the only question I'd have, and John, you may not have an answer to this, because I know you're not our full-time codes guy. Once the owners started get, bringing the property into compliance, was there any issues as far as belligerence or any issues as far as not wanting to do it or what have you? Or did basically, once they acquired the property, they started working on it and then brought it into compliance at that time? Is that the issue?
It seems to be from the case file. I don't, I don't see any notes in here to the contrary.
But didn't listen.
In that case, I would totally support Commissioner Rawls's.
I'd like to clear.
Motion that we.
Well, it wasn't a motion.
It's eleven thirty-nine.
Yeah, I'm gonna say the math is wrong, but.
Eleven thirty, yeah, eleven thirty-nine.
Oh, that is a nine. I saw, I read my nine as a four, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I, I'm good with that, if that's what you want to do, but.
Yeah, that, that was a motion.
The applicant may want to.
Yeah, let's have the applicant speak, and John, I appreciate your, you said you were gonna do the math, and I appreciate that. So Ms. Norma, would you want to come up and?
Is that a nine?
Yeah, a nine.
Can't read my writing.
I've got the next, next case right behind her, and I'd like to speak just a moment to the generic issues, is that possible?
Mr. Chairman, I think we should hear from the applicant first.
Yeah, we're gonna hear from the applicant first. We're gonna hear from the applicant first.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for hearing me.
Please, please, if you would, state your name and address for the record, your address.
My name is Norma Crawford. I live at two thirty-eight Lakeview Way, Interlaken, Florida. And I thank you all for listening to me today, because I know you're busy with lots of things. And so when the little people come into play, sometimes we think we won't get heard, so I just want to thank you for that. And basically, what Ralph wanted to do was talk to the whole big picture, but what I want to talk about is just me and my little picture. We buy and live and own in Putnam County because we love our county and we want it to be the best. But when we're on fixed incomes, the large fines are something that encumber us and we just can't afford them. I just would ask that you don't hinder us in our small attempt to try to make our neighborhoods and our counties better. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That being said.
Commissioner, Commissioner Rawls, hang on just a second. Commissioner Rawls?
Sorry.
I applaud you for, I applaud you for what you, what you've done. You took a piece of property, it lasted ninety days, you got it in compliance, obviously, because you're reforc'd in the first, the first month of the new year. We, we've set precedents in the past, and we have to enforce fines, so what I'm proposing is basically a dollar fine for one of them, and then reducing them by the additional twenty-one hundred and sixty dollars that is the administrative, which would leave a total of one thousand, one thousand one hundred and forty dollars total that would be due between the two, between the two cases. But we can't just make them go completely away. We do have hard costs, but we appreciate the fact, at least I do, that you've taken the initiative, go in and clean up your neighborhood and make it a better place, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Is it possible to pay that in a little bit of a longer timeframe than ninety days?
We could discuss that. And also, you, you're not the little people, you're the big people. You're the ones that signs in front of our paycheck. You're the ones that elect us or unelect us, and we serve you, you don't serve us. So I just wanted to make sure we get that out there, because you are, you are, you're the one driving the bus. But unfortunately, we are a country of law and rules, and we had to stick with it. But I do appreciate the fact that you've taken the initiative to do this.
Thank you.
Yes, Norma, I was gonna make a comment about that, too. We're all regular people up here, too. If you saw me Thursday at my regular job selling auto parts, you would not recognize me. I don't look like this, so, anyway, so, but thank you, and thank you for what you've done. So Commissioner Harvey?
Ms. Crawford, also, I wanted to bring that comment up. You're not the little person, you know, we are, and Commissioner Rawls said it right. We work for you, we work for every, every citizen of Putnam County, we all know that, and we all take that very seriously. I don't like the fines, I will tell you that point-blank, but I'd rather encourage with a carrot than beat with a stick. But unfortunately, we live in this society where fines make people do things, and, and the system works, you're fixing to find out how well it works, where people can come in to their elected officials and ask for relief, and that relief can be sought and given, because it is based on us, and it's based on our liens, and it's based on what we see people want to do in the neighborhood. But I would love to go, look, we'll give you money not to come to us, and we'll do this, but it doesn't really work that way from our seat. And unfortunately, the fines do make some people go, and I know what the next comment's gonna be, but we, we raise these fines, or these fines continue to occur, and people walk away from some of their property, we realize that. But at the same time, new people come in, and they get the property, and they clean it up. Some people never had the intention to ever clean up property, and some could just go, we've heard cases where people go, I'm homesteaded, I'm gonna wait till I die, the grandkids are gonna inherit it, no big deal after that, because I don't care what's gonna happen when I'm dead and gone. And the problem is, you drive by that property for ten or fifteen years. In my case, my wife drove, drives by our property, our old property, and sees it all the time.
Yes.
And believe me, there's nothing more frustrating to be a county commissioner and going home and go, what are y'all gonna do about that property out there? We're working on it. But I'll tell you, the good part is someone bought it, someone's rehabbing it, someone's fixing it up and cleaning it up, and now I don't hear that anymore.
Right.
So, you know, it is part of our system, and it's just a necessary part. So Ms. Crawford, just hang tight, and I think you're fixing to enjoy the process of your labor, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Turner, did you have a comment before we go to Commissioner Adams?
Would a hundred eighty days be enough, do you think?
Um, yes, that would definitely be better.
Commissioner Rawls, if you're prepared to adjust your motion to the proper number in a hundred eighty days.
I would say give it six months.
Sure, one of us will second it.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a proper motion to reduce the fine, I guess, to eleven thirty?
Eleven forty.
Eleven forty?
Eleven thirty-nine on the first one and a dollar on the second one.
And how many days? Hundred eighty?
Six months.
Hundred eighty to pay?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay. Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Okay, now, before we move forward, Mr. Bonner, do you want to speak on one of these cases or just these cases in general?
I didn't know she was gonna be here today, but I was involved with this property twelve years ago, and the next, the next item.
Okay, Mr. Bonner, excuse me, if you'll come up.
Yeah, the, the next item on the agenda, I'm here to ask for a reduction on the next one. But I did really want to talk about the issue, about the precedents, and, and if I could just, couple minutes.
Okay, I tell you what, we're gonna finish the cases, and then I'm gonna give you a few minutes to talk about the issue as a whole, okay?
Okay.
When we're done, okay? So we can finish these cases. Okay. Mr. Sioffi?
One, three, one, five? Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, we're on case number two thousand fifteen zero zero three, one, five. The property owner has recently purchased the property, it's in compliance, and they have requested a fine reduction for one thirty-nine Hayman Drive. Fees, original amount of fees were forty thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars, the calculated worksheet ends up being one thousand six hundred and eight dollars. If the board recommends, we ask for ninety days to pay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we settle this one for eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and give them ninety days.
Second.
We've got a proper motion and a proper second. Is the applicant here or the property owner here? Okay. Okay, this is on Ruth Fay Phelps.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Looks like they want to speak.
I think they're here.
Okay, is the applicant on the case two thousand fifteen oh oh three, one, five, Ruth Fay Phelps here? Is that you? Okay.
Okay, my name is Ruth Phelps. I live at one forty-three Martin Drive, Interlaken. We bought this house to renovate it, because it's in a nice neighborhood, but it's not nice. So my husband's working on it to fix it up to have it nice for the neighborhood that's set. And it's got a lot of penalties on it. Yeah, it has been recommended that it be cut down, but I also need to get the electric turned on, because it's kind of hard to see it late at night when Carl's working on it. So I need to get the electric turned on, get the fines paid, everything up to par.
Okay.
You understand?
Yes, ma'am, did you see that there was a motion made, correct?
Yes.
Right, a motion and a second to reduce this down to eight twenty-eight, was that believed? Did you hear that? We're gonna try to, we're gonna reduce it down to eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Okay.
Okay, and you have ninety days to pay. Is that enough time?
That's plenty.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Phelps, this was my old house, and raised my family in this home, and this is the one I was just talking about, being an eyesore in the community, and driving by it and walking by it, and my wife wanting something done with it. I know that this gentleman behind you wants to speak to us about the process, but the process worked in this case, because the fines went up, the people moved out, it was bought by somebody who wants to take care of it. Matter of fact, y'all were in there yesterday working, I saw you, and appreciate that very, very much. And it also, it landed itself where it was gonna be abated to the county at a cost, and the cost was pretty high. And I remember when Commissioner Adams, at one of your first meetings, we talked about how high the price was, and, and I remember you're stating that it might not have been that high because of the, the aesthetics of the community. So this works, even though the process is kind of difficult, it works because it, it takes people who have no intention of ever cleaning things up, out. It puts a new buyer in there who does have the intention of picking it up, and it also saves the taxpayers of Putnam County taxpayer dollars to go in there and abate the property or pare it down, and maybe making the property surplus, which would be no good for anybody. So this is a win-win situation, and I personally want to thank you very much. I live right around the corner, I think you know where I live. So if you ever want to talk about the history of how that property developed, and how we were so poor and couldn't afford a whole lot, and raised our family, and I tell you, our family still talks about putting the blankets up over the windows, lighting the kerosene heater and the, and how we all kind of grew up with the crabs that ran around one time when I made some money, a little extra bonus, and I bought crabs, and they went crazy in the kitchen and all over the living room, and it was funny. It was a lot of fun growing up on that property, and, and my wife taught dance on that property also. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the ability to speak.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
I'm gonna echo what Commissioner Harvey just said, but what you also have to realize is, the part of the process is putting the onus on the property, not on the backs of the taxpayers. I, I personally don't need a code enforcement officer in Putnam County or a code enforcement department if everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing. So the, the fine is not a punitive action against you, it's against the property, you just happen to be the, the recipient of the property, but the money that you pay actually goes to fund the code enforcement department and will be used to perpetuate other, other code enforcements on properties in the future as well. So it's, it's not, it's not a punitive action, and actually, by us reducing the fine to the point that we do, it's us praising you and thanking you for taking your time to do what's right for the community. So, you know, it's, obviously, an investment property is just part of the pain that comes along with being an investor. As far as getting your power turned on, do they have, was the CO pulled on that for some reason?
They need to get a permit to pull the power.
Make sure whatever your work, you're standing in front of the building official now, so whatever you say can and will be used against you. If you're doing work out there that requires a permit, make sure you get permits pulled and cleared, or you will never get power turned on, then you'll have a whole different problem.
Okay, Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, I didn't realize this was Commissioner Harvey's, one of his homesteads, but this property actually was recommended to me to look at by a local realtor out in Interlaken for finding a home for my daughter. And it isn't the one we chose, so luckily you guys got it, but I can tell just from looking at the picture, you didn't used to be able hardly see the house from the road, so I appreciate the work you've done.
Okay, all right, we're gonna call for the, for the vote. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you very much, good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay.
Our next case is two thousand seventeen zero zero one, oh, nine. The property owner has recently purchased the property, property is now compliant, and the owner has requested a fine reduction. The original amount was thirty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and it is reduced to, on our worksheet, of eighteen hundred and thirty-six dollars. The original violation was unsafe home due to fire.
Okay, is the property owner here? Okay, not, what's the pleasure of the board on this particular case?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reduce the fine to twelve hundred and fifty, is it, excuse me, let me back up, it's in compliance, right?
It is.
I move that we reduce the fine to twelve hundred and fifty-six dollars with ninety days to pay.
Second. We've got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, and proper second by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Gentlemen, our next case is two thousand twenty two seventy. The property owner has recently purchased the property, property is now compliant, the owner has requested a fine reduction. The original amount was twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and from our worksheet, you see the total cost, the hard costs are calculated at fourteen hundred and ninety dollars.
Is the property owner here?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Make a motion that we reduce the fine to twelve, one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and paid ninety days.
Second. We've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion on this matter? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same, same sign. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Sioffi?
Thank you, gentlemen.
We will relay to Mr. Board, he did a stellar job.
Have a great day.
Thank you, thank you, John, for everything you do.
You promised that, gentlemen.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ralph. As you come up, if you'll state your name and address for the record, and we'll give you three minutes, as Commissioner Harvey was saying, we have, it was actually work of former Commissioner Goddard to start moving this project forward like this, and it's, it's really worked well. So we've got a system in place, but we're interested in to hear your comments for three minutes, and by all means, you could always contact any of the commissioners with any of your concerns and suggestions. So, Mr. Bonner?
Yeah, it's Ralph Bonner, two, two, five Duncan Avenue. I'm a real estate investor, and it just so happens, I didn't know these ladies were gonna be here today.
Mr. Bonner?
I sold them their.
If you just pulled the microphone up.
I sold them their house, and I had worked toward the, the one that's on the agenda today. I had worked toward trying to take care of that property next door, but for a real estate investor, it's a, it's a numbers game. I lost money, I paid some back taxes on it, and when I ran, found out the well didn't, didn't function, had to have a new well, it didn't make sense. There are thousands, I know there are hundreds, and I believe there are thousands of these things sitting all across the county. And if real estate investors knew what their situation would be, if they, if you talk to anybody, nobody can tell you what the fine's going to be. I've, I've had fines of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars reduced to a thousand dollars, but that was a long time ago. But when I'm trying to work my numbers, I don't know what the fine is gonna be in the end. I don't know if the well is gonna work, that's seven thousand dollars. I don't know if the septic tank's gonna work, that's big money. So all I'm saying, y'all were talking about setting precedent, if real estate investors knew that they could come in here, I've never seen one where you wouldn't reduce the fine a lot, but if we had a little bit more precedence or whatever about what we might get that reduced to, I'm working on another one right now, and it's got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and I'm hoping that when I come in, y'all are gonna work with me on it, but I don't know what that final number is gonna be. So that's what I really want to talk about, is the thousands of the, you live right around the corner from, from this one. Three years ago, I tried to do it. You may have noticed, I came in and cut the grass several times because I thought I had the deal put together. In the end, I couldn't put it together because the owner wanted more money than it was worth. So all I'm saying is, sometimes it works, and sometimes it never works. There are hundreds of these sitting there, been sitting there for twenty years or more. So all I'm asking is, let's think about giving a little bit more leeway, or get, setting a precedent that if a new owner comes in, new owner, I'm not talking about the old owner, I'm not talking about someone who refused to do anything for all these years. My time's up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Harvey's next.
Mr. Chairman, I want to respond to that.
Mr. Bonner, if you want to stay up there, we've got, the commissioners have some comments, and public, Building Department Director wants to make some comments, too.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Mr. Bonner, I've been here seven years. I've yet to see that this board, or the previous boards that I've served with, have not reduced the fines based on the cooperation of the citizens.
And I haven't seen that they.
Hang on, Mr. Bonner, I've also seen in Christmas time, it even a little bit more generous at certain times, okay?
Okay.
So I, I stand by the statement I made earlier, and I don't know if you heard me, so I'll say it again. I would love to incentivize with a carrot and not beat with a stick, but that's not how this process works. And the process gets rid of people who don't want to improve their property, and it, it puts the, the new sale on, on somebody new that wants to do something. I can't imagine if I wasn't an investor in Putnam County and looking at this, that I wouldn't go, historically, the board cuts these fines down to minimal. I've had real estate agents, though, tell me, they don't want me to cut these fines down. They want them to stay up high, because it's time people start taking care of their property. I disagree with that, I'll tell you that publicly, but I do think, you don't have to find me to take care of my property. You know where I live, you drive by my place, you can see, I'll spend as much time killing all them weeds that I possibly can in my yard, mowing what little bit of grass seems to be available, but I take care of my property. And I wish everybody took care of their property, and most of the people do. This is not a bad thing, it's just that, Interlaken Lake Estates, years ago, when I was a young boy, we'd go Christmas light-looking in Interlaken Lake Estates, because it was the place to go. The retirees came from up north. I had a great career in the insurance business out in Interlaken, taking care of some of these mobile homes, and people who took care of their property. But what happens is, people die off, they leave the property to their grandson or their son, who could care less about Florida and dirt road, and they don't want anything to do with mom and dad's property, and they're fine with doing what they're doing up north, and they rent it out, and then we see what happens to these places. So the process works, I'll stand beside this process, and I'll stand with this board all day long on this process, and allowing us the flexibility at the end to, based on information, to reduce those fines down, and I'll do that till the day I'm no longer Commissioner, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Turner?
Yeah, one thing we need to understand here that we're, that you're wanting us to lose the sight of, is that if we make some kind of a policy that we're gonna auto-reduce any fines, they're not a fine anymore. They're just not a fine anymore, and the precedence could take, could change at the next meeting. This board has always agreed to reduce these fines because it works. It works to bring properties that are not in compliance into compliance, and we're willing to reward that hard work for reaching compliance by reducing the fine down to costs. We're willing to do that, this board, but I'm telling you right now, that doesn't mean that, that the next board meeting, that precedence could change by just changing that precedence, and we no longer do that anymore. So.
That's kind of my issue.
Well, I understand, but it's not, it's not up to me to make your real estate business profitable, it's just not. Hey, if I could get that deal done, I'd go into business with you. So basically, we could go hunt every property in Putnam County that has a big fine on it, go in there and offer them half the money, knowing that we're gonna come in here and get it automatically reduced. That ain't the way this is gonna work. We're trying to reward somebody who's trying to help Putnam County and bring properties into compliance by the reduction. This, this, this program is not in place to make a real estate investor money. and bring properties into compliance by the reduction. This pro, this, uh, this program is not in place to make a real estate investor money. That's not why we did this to start with. If you come into compliance, I'm on board with you. I'll give you the same thought and consideration as anybody else that walks in here, but you don't get extra consideration because you're in the real estate investing business. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Rawls?
Commissioner Turner alluded to it, I'm just gonna say it, you don't have a crystal ball, I don't have a crystal ball. I take a risk every day that I go and run my business. Prices go up, I have firm fixed prices, I can't control that. You're, you have to make a decision whether or not you want to take your money and put it at risk. You mentioned well and septic. I would assume, if I was in your position, that the septic is not gonna be viable, and the well is not gonna be viable, but if, if you, you know, last thing I want to hear as a commissioner is that you bought a piece of property and found out you have a pig and a poke, um, and now you have to deal with it. The fact is, you're, that's your business, that, that's your risk. Put it in real estate, put it in the market, put it into whatever it is you're gonna put it in, you're taking a risk. This is the way the American capitalist system works, so, I, I don't, I, I don't think that we treat any investors any differently than we do homeowners or heirs of property. We've dealt with people that have received property, um, because of death of, of family members. We don't treat anybody differently. I think we're extremely generous, to say the least. When you take a look at a, you know, a forty thousand dollar fine, being handed some money for a thousand dollar payback, and, and I, I'm going from memory, but I don't think I've seen one for over five thousand dollars, and and even at those, we, we kind of cringe and wish we could do more for them.
Well, well, obviously-
Hey, wait a minute, wait a minute, John Sioffi, and John, do you want to make a comment? Okay, and then I'm gonna give you thirty seconds at the end.
Okay.
Okay, John?
Hopefully, this is the end.
Yeah.
Commissioners, I don't want us to lose fact, sight of the fact that we've already reduced this at the direction of the board, some of these from a hundred thousand dollars down to three thousand. On top of that, you're reducing it even more, so, I can't, I'm not gonna speak on the investment side. That's on the investor, but I think, at any given moment, Tom Moore, Mary Vrabel, we all receive calls, and we let the people know what the fines are, and the way to get to compliance, and also to this process of fine reduction. The process works, it's working great with the county, we're cleaning up blighted properties, and we're gonna continue to do so until you direct us otherwise. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ralph, we usually, we usually don't do what we're doing, but I'm allowing this because of the subject, but I want everybody to understand, this program is working for the county and for the citizens that are involved, so we'll give you thirty seconds. And then, like I say, you can reach out to any commissioner at any time about suggestions on, on the program, okay?
I can tell by the comments, I obviously didn't get my idea across. We have thousands of these things sitting out there. I know y'all are very limited in what you can do. You can fine, uh, you can, but my idea is to try to come up with a different way, because if, if you put fines on there, and they're not gonna do anything, there's, it just sits there, and sits there, and sits there. Some of these things been around for twenty years, so I didn't get my point across.
Okay, all right, and then some of these monies we're putting back in to, so we could actually use more money to abate, so eventually, we'll clean them up, and then we'll own them, so, and then try to sell the properties, so, but anyway, thank you for your comments, okay? Okay, that takes care of the fine, the codes enforcement. Okay, we'll move down to number eight, Matt Reynolds, clerk of court.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, it's been a while since I've seen all of you. It feels like it's been forever, so, it's good to be back in the, uh, in the commission chambers and, uh, looking forward to the new year.
Okay, all right, thank you, Matt. Okay, we'll move down to appointments, and Sarah, I just want a clarification, I don't know if everybody got this, um, but it has District One at-large vacancies. Are there still two for Parks and Recreation?
Though.
Okay, 'cause I have one I want to make a recommendation on, so, um, okay, we'll move to, um, appointments. Commissioner Rawls, any appointments?
We have an applicant received for Christopher Shepherd for the, um, building trades to represent as a roofing contractor.
Okay, is that, is that, is that, is that at-large? Okay, that's a, okay, so we have a nomination, a motion to nominate, what was his name?
Christopher Shepherd.
Christopher Shepherd.
Second.
Okay, we got a second?
I don't think you have a second nomination, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
And, um, I have no others at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
I have none at this time.
Commissioner Adamsak?
Um, I guess I have a question on the library board. Um, I was contacted, I think, by the, whoever the chair of that board is, that what my appointee Caitlin Owens wouldn't be able to serve anymore 'cause of some other role that she has, I guess, 'cause she's, it's a decision-making board, is that actually a decision-making board? Or is that an advisory board? I just want to clarify what type of board that is, so that I can relay that back to Ms. Owens, and make sure that she actually doesn't qualify, if, if that's the case.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can pull the ordinance and get you a copy of it, and that should, I'm looking at the summary of it, but it doesn't say that specifically, so I have to get a copy of it.
Okay, and I, I just got that email last night, so, um, hopefully she doesn't resign, 'cause my understanding is she's been doing a great job on the board, so, um, but if you could let me know that, that'd be great.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I don't, I have nothing this month.
Okay, I would like to, um, start by thanking, uh, former mayor of Crescent City Brett Peterson for his service on the Animal Control Advisory Board. He served some six years, and has stepped down, and I'd like to nominate Ms. Linda Young, uh, for a District One appointment, uh, for animal services.
Is it a District One, you just appoint, there's no nomination?
Yeah, I believe it's District One is open, correct? Yes, and then also, the at-large position for the Parks and Recs Advisory Board. I'd like to nominate Ms. Brenda McGibbons to that position, so that's my motion. Okay, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, that's all the, uh, appointments that I have, so we'll move down to, uh, public comment. On miscellaneous items, this portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect that the board will engage a debate and deliberation about matters on which the board has received no prior, uh, information. Uh, when you come to the podium, please state your name and address, and speak clearly into the microphone, and you'll be given roughly three minutes. So, we'll start, all right, Patrick Kennedy's not here. Um, I'm gonna move, 'cause I know she has to get out of here, Janet, Janet Sornberger?
She's holding the baby. No, it's Mrs. Ivy's.
Hi, guys, how you doing?
Hey, he was here before in front of the microphone, just not in that fashion.
That's fair. Good morning.
State your-
It's not afternoon yet, right?
State your name and address, please.
My name is Janet Sornberger. My address is three-eight-seven Huntington Shortcut Road, Pomona Park, Florida, three-two-one-eight-one. I have great news, guys. There has been so much pressure about, I call it the bio solids threat. So many questions about, what does that mean, who does it apply to, what is the right solution? And when I homeschool my kids, we learn about the five common topics, and it's a way of approaching any problem. First, you have definition. What do these words really mean? Comparison? The third one, I always forget, I think it's gonna come to me in a minute, and then we have relationship and authority, and I'm gonna focus on the word authority here, because we found the authority on the bio solids ordinance. His name is Patrick Kennedy, and he wrote it. Praise God, like, phew, he has all the answers to all of the questions we have. So, we have asked him to revise it, and he said, you know, this is really just an update, this is from two thousand and four. I can see how we really need some clarification, 'cause you know, this refers to the land code, which these numbers don't match the current Muni code, so all of this wordage is really already implied, it's just hard to find out, because the code numbers don't match. Does that make sense to you guys? Okay, phew, because for me, I, my questions are, what's a violation? How many times? And he's like, no, all of this is actually current rule, it's just I'm making it easier to understand for the new guy. Fantastic. Okay, I'm halfway through my time. So, he has rewritten and updated ordinance for bio solids. He's changed the term residuals to bio solids, and defined the differences in Class B, Class A, and Class AA. Fantastic, 'cause then we're all talking about the same thing. We took Rich Commando's advice, it's really unfortunate that he's not here today, and we modeled it after Baker County. After a meeting one day, I said, Rich, help me, this is exhausting, like, everyone cares, but this is so much time, and he said, Janet, you can just rewrite it yourself. Pull up the Google Doc, strike through what you don't like, underline what's new, then we'll revise it and approve it or not. I was like, wow, we can just change it? We don't have to have workshops and meetings and wait for five hours? This is fantastic. But then I felt like this might be too much for me, so once again, praise God for Patrick Kennedy. Um, I have a written copy here, but I think he maybe babies this project, and he's like, I would like it to be like a hundred percent. It's ninety-five right now, I really want to tweak it. So, ultimately, it's not a ban on Class B bio solids, but ultimately, it does protect Putnam County from getting pooped on by other counties, and it preserves Putnam County's ability to deal with our own waste, and I am gonna call it a compromise layered with other compromises. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Commissioner Rawls?
I did speak to Patrick this morning, and, you know, I told him that I personally am for a ban for bringing in from the outside. I think that if the, the state enacted the septic tank inspection program that required all the septic tanks to be emptied and inspected every five years, we would have a, 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 a real feel for what our true bio solids are in the county. Um, and we can go to the Health Department and pull the records up and see how many active septic systems we have in the county right now, which tells us what we already have, so, I, I'm, I'm not in favor of bringing in anything from outside. We're experiencing a lot of growth right now, um, and other communities are too, but they have to solve their problems, we have to deal with our problems, whatever they may be. We don't want to make their problems our problems as well, that's just how I feel.
I think the problem is, is that we can dream really big, but what can we actually do to solve the problems at hand? And I think the language he's chosen, it adds clear clarification on what's appropriate in which zones, and instead of saying it's a ban on Class B bio solids, it says, this type of bio solid is best on this type of land, which respects concerns that each of you have expressed, in words that I couldn't have come up with. Any other questions?
Commissioner Harvey?
I want to thank you for coming and bringing this to our attention for a long time, that you've been coming-
How has this been, over a year?
You speak very well. You know, one thing that, um, I, I, I go back and, you know, we sit up here and we hear the public speaking, and then we hear each other speaking, and Commissioner Rawls said at one time that made me really think about how many lots are in, just take my area, West Putnam, for example, and seventy-five by one-twenty-five lots that have been platted and could be sold, and could have a place on it, possibly not under today's conditions, but maybe it takes two or three lots, but that's still a lot of lots that could be developed. And how much poop can Putnam County handle on that? And what's our water recharge? I've even reached out to, to, um, a friend of mine who's in that business, and found out, you know, some, some data. So, this is how the system works, and we appreciate you coming and sharing in your group. I still think the shirt should be brown, but not black, but that's okay. But I really do appreciate it, and that's, and, and we're not adversarial. We're working together, because I think you know how every commissioner up here feels when we talk about bio solids and their application, where they can be put, where they can't be put, where they shouldn't be put, and I think all that brings to light a good Putnam County that nobody poops on for no matter what problem there is. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Fantastic, I appreciate you all.
Ivy D., do you want to speak?
Does she get to hold the baby too?
Hello, so earlier, we discussed putting the revised-
State your name and-
Sorry, Ivy Salz, Oakwood Avenue, Lake Como, Florida. So, earlier, we discussed putting the revised bio solids ordinance on the agenda, and I just wanted to clarify, because a workshop was also mentioned, but we've also already held a workshop on bio solids, so I just wanted to clarify what our expectation is moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, ma'am?
Yes.
It's gonna have to go to workshop as the ordinance change, and that's policy of the board, it's not gonna go straight to the board with no review or anything, and just be, just be done because you hired a lawyer or got a lawyer to write it for you. It's got to be reviewed and have time for us to digest it, so, that's just my, my opinion as a commissioner, it would have to go to workshop.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, so they've requested to put this on a workshop, so I asked before the meeting, um, you saw me talking with them before the meeting, to put this on our next workshop, it's a transportation workshop, but I think that's, we can fit that in, if that's agreeable by the commission.
Do, do we feel that his hundred percent is gonna be done in time for that workshop?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's only two weeks, Mr. Chairman, and when are we gonna get the information as far as the language and what have you? If it's gonna be presented at the workshop, that's not gonna help at all.
Right.
We need to have, if they're gonna, if they're gonna present at the workshop, then they need by the end of this week to have the language turned in for us to review for that next meeting. If they can't get it in in time, then we need to move it back to the workshop after the following meeting, because this commissioner needs a couple of weeks to read it and digest it or what have you. I know this is a very important issue, and I'm all for, for going down this road with you guys, but I got to have time to be able to review it and read it and look at it or two, where I know what I'm passing. I'm not Nancy Pelosi that just passes whatever she wants, and then, and then we'll read it.
Ivy, is that doable?
We can have it ready by the end of this week.
When, so, end of this week, and you would need to get it to administration, correct? Okay, Commissioner Adamsak?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to second Commissioner Turner's, that's what I was gonna say, so, we have it by the end of this week, and I guess we would have it early next week, I guess. That, that would give us time to read it, 'cause I want to read through it as well. I appreciate all the effort you guys have done.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
I just, the, the parcel that's in question, um, how does this, uh, I guess, you know, I'd, I'd ask Rich if he was here, how does this impact that? You know, is this gonna stop that, or are we still gonna be fighting that fight? That's the question.
We'll see if it passes.
You mean DP, um, DP, or?
No, the, with the ordinance, well, I mean, if, it's a matter of, the ordinance will definitely place, uh, tighter restrictions for the applicant. Um, the idea is to have it pertain to current and new applications moving forward, and then those that are already active will be grandfathered. So, um, not to mess with, with what's currently in place, but to set a precedent moving forward.
So, I, I guess my question would, maybe, you know, Mr. Suggs, um, are we in peril if we put this ordinance in place? They, they've already made their application, you know what I'm saying, it, I don't know if, if, if they're, we're setting ourselves up for a suit, or if we can, I know it needs to go before the ZVOA at some point through the, within contention, but how, how does a, a new ordinance affect an old application?
Well, Commissioner, I, I honestly, I don't know how to answer that today. I haven't seen the ordinance and what the restrictions that they put on there are, so I don't know if there was, there's gonna be any issues or not, but as soon as we get a copy of the draft ordinance and have Mr. Commando, uh, take a look at it, then we can be better prepared to answer that, but until we know what restrictions are, I don't know how we can answer that.
Yeah, so I can interject a little bit. I had a conversation with Commando, it's not gonna affect the applicant that's already submitted. It'll be anybody that comes after.
So, how does this help y'all with?
Well, let's wait until the ordinance.
Yeah, I need to see what it says before we just start discussing what it might say.
Okay, all right, Ivy, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Patrick Kennedy is not here. This is Mr. Kevin Stanton. Is he here? He what? Okay. Okay, um, Ms. Chiquita, hope I pronounced it right, Williams? Okay, if you just please state your name and address for the, uh-
Good morning, my name is Chiquita Williams, and two oh-five Elm Avenue. Um, I'm here because, uh, I'm a new business within, uh, Putnam County, Community Hands of Hope, and I want to introduce to everyone that I am an anger management specialist, and I am a certified batter's intervention program specialist. Trying to become, um, a new provider within our community to assist with these services that are impacting our community greatly. COVID-nineteen and the pandemic has increased the anxiety in everybody, and I think everybody can benefit from the anger management education component. Currently, I'm working with, um, the Putnam County School District, and I'm counseling children who are in ISS and solutions as an intervention before expulsion. So, I just wanted everyone to- So I just wanted everyone to know that I am listed on Court Administration, um, as a provider and also for the Department of Corrections. So if anyone can get the word out, just know that I'm trying to make a difference within our community with some of the issues and concerns that is plaguing our community.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Harvey, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a statement. I, I came out of that kind of a environment. You don't have to be a repeater. You can break the cycle. If you ever need someone to speak about that, I'm willing to do that.
Okay.
But I also say that my wife raised me up, right? Okay? And she told me right off the bat that you're not going to do this to me. So, um, so we never did, and, um, I thank God for that. So, but it can be broken. It just takes a lot of work and a lot of willpower and communication. So if I can ever be of help to you, just let me know, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you and welcome to Putnam County. Okay, any further public comment? Clay will close the public comment portion of the meeting. We'll move down to number 11, item 11, County Administrator, Terry Suggs.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. First of all, what a great meeting we've had today for a kickoff meeting for a new year, very positive. Couple things, just, uh, again, let's be mindful of, of our staff today. We've got Mr. Sam Willis as well as Mr. Thomas Moore, who both lost their mothers this, this past week. And, uh, you know, and, and again, we've got the, uh, uh, COVID is rearing its ugly head again, and, and we've got some folks that are out with that as well. So we want to be mindful and of, of, of our surroundings as, as we go forward as well and wish them nothing but a, a great speedy recovery as well. Mr. Chairman, actually, we don't have any other comments other than, again, what a great positive meeting we've had here today, and I appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Rich Commando is not with us. Keep Rich and his family in your, in your prayers also. So we'll move down to Commissioner comments, and I'll start to my far left, Commissioner Rawls.
I just want to say it's great to be back. Miss you guys enough, but, uh. Kind of grow when you don't. Yeah. But no, in all seriousness, I, uh, seriousness, I attended the Northeast Florida Regional Council meeting the other day, and, um, as for us to get a conversation started regionally about the impact that we're experiencing and, and, and are going to continue to experience with the, um, the economy right now, the, if you listen to the, um, economists, e- even the, you know, no matter what aisle, side of the aisle you sit on, everybody's agreeing that, um, the inflation that we have right now is real. It's here. It's, um, going to continue to rise, and they're projecting us to be close to 7% if not higher this year, just like last year. The impact on our employees is going to be tremendous. 14%, two years in a row, um, that, that's a, a substantial pay cut for anybody. Our housing costs are just skyrocketing. Our cost of doing business for anybody that's in business is, is really getting out of control. And I think that we need to have a workshop and get ourselves engaged and take a look at what we can do for our employees and for our citizens. You know, the, there was a, a news article that said that our housing prices rose to the same occasion as Clay County. So we're, we're, uh, we're, we're in a position to effect change. I don't know what we can do, but I think we should at least have a conversation about it. But looking at our employees, I think we really need to be deliberate this year in how we fund them, their departments, their, their salaries, uh, because, you know, they're, some of those guys are going to be on a sinking ship if we're not careful. And we got to see if we, what we can do to help them out. But, um, but otherwise, it's great to be back.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I look forward to 2022. It's going to be a great year. And I want to look back just a moment to, uh, December of last year. All the Christmas celebrations that were going on throughout the community just does a really, does your heart good to get out there and, and see everybody and see how the communities, um, celebrate and just enjoy each other. There might be some differences in the community, but I can tell you one thing that, that brings everybody together. Do want to thank our staff, um, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Suggs. My health was compromised a week ago. Mr. Suggs jumped right in there and took care of the situation. I had the excellent care at Putnam Community Hospital and, um, came down with the COVID, uh, tested positive for that, had the IV treatment. And I can tell you, we hear bad things sometimes in our community about certain organizations, but I can tell you I was treated so well. And I will encourage you that if you've been, haven't been vaccinated, please be vaccinated. It does help. It does help the symptoms a little bit, and the antibody treatment that our governor has provided, uh, really helped out a lot, too. In that segue, I was not able to attend the Northeast Florida Regional Council Awards, and that was something I was looking so forward to trying to do, but my health just would not allow me to make that trip up there to Jacksonville and to give those awards. And I didn't think it was prudent for me to be sick and doing that. So I do want to thank the Putnam County Chamber for the Visit Putnam app that they won an award on, and also the Young Professional in the Putnam First Group for their survey of our community assets. Great things happen in Putnam County, and, um, it's glad, I'm glad to be a part of that, and I'm glad to see that this county is probably one of the most given counties. I've always said that. No matter what the need is, people rise up and, and help each other. And I want to thank everyone for doing that. And again, we look forward to 2022. And, Mr. Chairman, that ends my comments. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Adams, Zach?
Yeah, I guess I just want to, I, I as well was feeling ill for several weeks there, on and off, and, uh, I want to reassure everyone that sent me notes of well wishes because of the pictures my wife was sharing around Christmas time. I looked pretty beat, and I really did, and I didn't realize how bad I looked until she showed me the pictures, and people were messaging me, private messaging me and stuff and saying, hey, are you all right? And, uh, I'm feeling much better. I do have a course of treatment for my ongoing illnesses that seems to have sparked some energy back in my life, which is very exciting because today I feel better than I have in two years. But with that said, that I had a lot of time where I was kind of reading and doing more stuff than I normally would, which I do a lot of that to begin with. But one thing that struck me odd for our country is they've released, noticed that the most productive sector of our economy is 50 to 65 years of age, which is, is kind of scary because that hasn't historically been the case, right? I mean, so our, our younger aged people, and, and I'm not even there yet. I'm one year away from being 50. This year I turned 50. So I guess I'm not productive yet till, till November.
I'm past productive.
Yeah, so he's past production. I'm just coming into production. But I guess, I guess that brings up with hearing of the news of a couple of people losing their parents. That also is the age where we tend to lose loved ones and things like that. And I, it struck me in my head, I want to talk about productivity, but it also, I don't know, do we have like a bereavement policy for, is it, what, what is it for our employees if, if they have a death? If, and only because I had the opportunity to take advantage of that in my employment outside of the county this year, and it was very helpful to not utilize your sick time and vacation time for that.
There is a, uh, Mr. Chairman, there is a, uh, a bereavement leave policy that's here in place. We can get you a copy of it, so you'll be familiar with it.
Awesome.
But we also work with those employees, uh, under extenuating circumstances, and make sure that they're healthy and, and ready to come back as well. But there is a policy in place.
Okay. And, uh, just glad to be back as well, and I missed everybody myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams, Zach. Commissioner Turner?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've been told by Mr. Sioffi that we're possibly within a couple of weeks of getting CityServe up and running. I know it's been a long, difficult process, process, and I'm glad to hear that we're getting down to the wire. The, uh, hopefully it'll do everything that we're hoping, that we're wishing it'll do. Main reason I'm bringing it up today isn't just for the finish line, but if commissioners haven't gotten a call or a complaint yet about the air system down, it's part of the process. And so, you know, if they do call you or contact you or whatever, because they can't get hold of the permitting, tell them to send an email or call our inspector. Usually they have a contact with one of them, and, and they can get the, uh, inspection turned in, but it's part of the process to switch over that the air system's been down. So, um, the other thing is sometime in the not-too-distant future, I'd like to have a conversation in a transportation workshop. Doesn't have to happen this one coming up, but it needs to happen about some kind of a policy that if we get an engineer or an inspection service or someone that we feel like has done, has wronged the county because of the actions they took on a project, we need to figure out a way that we don't just hire them for the next project and keep using them. Now, I don't know how to do that. I'm not saying that would, that it's maybe to the level that we blackball somebody or blacklist them or whatever. I'm just not debar or whatever, but I'm not at that. I don't know that it's quite to that level, but for an engineer or, or a, um, inspection services company, they're not hired through a bid. They're hired through a committee who reviews them and then ranks them, and then we, uh, do the rank order, if I'm, I'm correct. We approve the rank order, and most of the time we approve what the committee comes up with. But we got to have another way to do this, because if we get an engineer, whoever they might be, I'm not going to name names today or whatever, but if we have an engineer that has wronged the county by action that they took, we don't need to hire them on the next project. That's like ludicrous. And so we've got to figure out a way, and I don't know how at the moment, but we've got to figure out a way to make that happen. And it's just like, if we find out that an inspection service is charging us by the day $1,750 a day, even on days when it rains, and they could have just called up and the contractor say, well, we're not working today, it's scheduled to rain, they show up anyhow and write down they were on the job and charged $1,750 to the county. Guys, that ain't right. That ain't right. But it's happening. So we've got to figure out a way to make the people that are doing wrong to Putnam County, whether it be engineers, inspection services, I mean, we debar contractors if they do something wrong. So if, if they do something wrong, we can't just put them back in the process and let them be picked again for the next job and us turn their head, because there's got to be some kind of accountability here, some kind of accountability. So like I said, I don't know how to do that exactly right now, but we've got to figure out a way because it's just, it's just complete craziness to me that we take somebody that we know did us wrong and then hire them on the next job as an engineer. That's just ludicrous. You wouldn't do it in your, in your business life, you wouldn't do it in your private life. So why would we do it as the county? This is our business, too. So that's all I had today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls, you have a comment?
I, I agree wholeheartedly. I've been very frustrated with the process. I think, you know, we, we obviously can't debar them. They're not breaking any rules. They're working under the conditions of the contract that we agreed to. So I think it's just a matter of us, um, tightening up on the contract language, um, you know, uh, not to beat a dead horse, but when you have, um, a design bid, um, or a design build, you don't have this problem because the contractors are going to be the one to eat it, and they're not going to put up with it either. But, uh, I, I think we definitely need to have a.
Even on a design build, though, you, you've got to have an inspection service that's not part of the design bill.
But the design build could be the people that pay for it, although it's a third-party service, they include it, their overall cost, so they're not going to have their cost overrun. But I, I agree, it, and, and, and at the end of the day, the citizens are paying for it and taking the pain, but, uh, I would love to see this on a workshop as soon as possible. I don't think it even needs to be in a transportation workshop because this is really a, a generalized issue that could raise us like we had in other areas besides transportation.
Okay, we'll get that on, um, hopefully maybe the next, our, our February workshop, or probably be the first in February. Okay. You know, the comments, okay? I just really thank you. I think it was a good meeting. I want to, uh, wish everybody, hopefully, a Merry Christmas and a start of a good 2020. Hopefully this is going to be a good year for everybody. I did miss you guys. It does seem like we've been, uh, you know, gone for a while, but, uh, without having a meeting, second meeting in December, um, it is a little while. So, uh, a couple of happy birthdays, I think, Sarah Herbine, did you have a birthday? And then J.R. Grimes. I won't mention their age, I think I know it, but they're both under that statistics you were talking about then, and they're, they're very productive, uh, aren't you? So, um, I would like to, um.
Chairman, you had a birthday, too.
Yeah, I'm almost, I'm at, I'm at the, uh, social security age, so I'm at the upper end of that scale, and, um, I'm, I'm getting ready to be nonproductive in about three, three years. So, uh, I'd like to call and mention, discuss, um, I, I would like to have an ARPA meeting to discuss how we're going to move forward with the ARPA monies. We've talked about some distributions, um, but I think it's time to give staff direction on how we want to move forward. I'd like to utilize next Tuesday, the January 18th at nine for that meeting, if, if everybody's in agreement of that.
I'm good.
Commissioner Adams, Zach? Yeah, Tuesday 18th at nine in this, we, we may meet in the other room, we might meet here, I'm not sure. Depends on, um, what I make decisions, so. Is that okay with everybody? Administrator Suggs or Julianne, you want to add anything to that?
No, other than the fact that I think it's a great opportunity for us because of staff, we are bound by a timeline that's pretty, you know, pretty tight right now, so we're going to need some, uh, some direction from the board, and we're looking forward to next Tuesday.
Okay. And, um, one of the things I wanted to do as chairman is to attend the pre-agenda meetings. Uh, I was not able to do that last Tuesday, but I was able to do it, excuse me, last Monday, but yesterday I was able to. It was really interesting to see all the discussion from the directors and department heads on, um, items that we were discussing and, and moving forward today. But one of the things we did talk about, and Julianne, I want to put you on the spot, but I believe you and Sam, uh, this ARPA, as you mentioned, would be kind of a moving vehicle, and it would have changes in it. So aren't you all going to do a couple of Zoom meetings to update on the changes? Can you just address that a little bit?
Yes, sir, we're going through that now. The final rule has come out, um, and it has incorporated some changes into what was the interim rule. We expected from the very beginning that there would be some changes that are going to come forward. There are still some webinars, and we're still going through those documents. There are several hundred pages written by several mini lawyers, and so we're going through all of that now, but we, uh, believe we'll have some information for you guys on the 18th based on what we know as of that point.
All right, thank you, yes, I was hoping we'd have updates and be able to discuss how we're going to move forward, um, with some of these monies, so.
Yes, sir, we'll, with the staff is continuing to do all the things that we can do on our end, so that when we get to, to the meeting on the 18th, we'll be a little more prepared to be able to kind of give some guidance on what we may or may not be able to do or should or shouldn't do. And, uh, again, Julianne and, and, uh, Mr. Sullivan are doing yeoman's work, and I know Sam jumped on reading about a 400-page document this weekend that came out. So, uh, you know, they're, they're doing a lot of work behind the scenes to get us prepared to be able to make some good decisions.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Turner?
Mr. Troxel, are you going to be ready by then with the proposal we've been working on for the sustainability of the, the sewer and water?
Yes, sir, I'll see some of the Saturday workshop.